We lost a seventeen-year employee here in Pottstown Borough. Bill Sharon is no longer with us, and it will be a great loss. We'll have a little review in the Borough Manager's Report. Find out some things about— you'll find out some things about Bill that you didn't know. But I would ask that, in your moment of silence, please keep them in your thoughts and prayers. So if you'll rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge. Amen? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It is at this time we're going to go into an executive session. We have some personnel issues that need to be discussed. We will be returning, and most likely there will be action taken.
God does subscribe.
Our session has ended and yielded two add-ons to this meeting. We'll place them after number twenty-five, if the hard administrative approve. One will be for acceptance of a contract for our Borough Manager, and the other is an acceptance of a contract for a police team. So four hundred subcommittee reports, infrastructure, Vice President Culp. Okay. Economic development. There's no meeting anyway.
No, there was no meeting.
We presume there was no meeting for—
There was no meeting.
No meeting.
Sorry.
You're up, please.
Meeting in council, isn't that fair? So I wanted to just take a moment to say that I was very sorry to hear about Bill Sharon's passing. You know, it's about partnerships and collaboration, and Bill, although it was not part of his job, he worked really hard with Sheila Dugan and I to bring a group of people in that were losing their space in a Collegeville area. It ended up not yielding anything except for goodwill, but it was really important, and he was really committed to that effort. So I just wanted to acknowledge that effort. So I like to come and give good news, but I'm also a realist, so I want you to have the real deal. The Vault has decided that it is not going to be opening in Pottstown. They have pulled out the former Brick House space. They have had some financial backing trouble. I have been in contact with the owner of the building and the space at 152 East High, and we are working on finding another tenant for him. But I do want you to know that that is in fact the case, and that's why the signs are down, and unfortunately, that is not going forward. Lastly, I'm here to ask, on behalf of Bonita, Haye, and Hobart's Run, we are having our second annual Fedon Block on September the twenty-fourth, right here in Smith Family Plaza, from six to nine.
Nine.
Six to nine. And we would like council to take up consideration for consumption of alcohol, and should there be any of our distillers in town who would like to provide sale that they will get the proper licensing?
So you want us to drink at the event?
I would like you to. You also may bring your own, as long as you bring clear glasses or white cups in your white finery. We'd also like to invite all of you to attend. We hope it'll be another beautiful September evening like last year.
What's the date again?
September the fourteenth. And that's my report and my request.
Transportation, Vice President Culp.
Meeting next week.
You're all gonna have to speak up louder.
Meeting next week.
Ad hoc zoning, Councilor Pross, hold on.
No, me.
Animal committee, Councilor Kirkland's not here, is there anyone else? Please.
Tom, is that zoning?
Okay. First, I want to say that it takes honor and integrity and courage to stand up for what's right, and few people possess those qualities. So before I start, I want to recognize Mick Markovich, Brian Marquette, and Councilman Kirkland, who is not here tonight. The animal committee met on Friday, July twentieth, and we have some recommendations. I'm gonna start by, rescue groups have been doing TNR programs in the borough for many, many, many years. It wasn't until November of 2015 that a group of animal advocates got together and recognized this and put some protections into place in the borough ordinances for these cats that are in these programs. These programs are not new. They're new to the area that John covers, but they're not new to surrounding municipalities, cities, states. There's municipalities that offer vouchers to their citizens to participate in these programs because they're humane and they're effective. It is unfortunate that when cats are picked up by animal control, not a rescue group, and they're taken to the SPCA, they have zero per chance, zero chance of survival. These are furor cats; they are synonymous with community cats. They're not tame. They're—nobody owns them. They are—they have caregivers. They are picked up in TNR programs by rescue groups. They're spayed and neutered, vaccinated, year-tened. This lets all groups know that these animals are in this program and being—and at least initially, being taken care of. These programs are effective for many reasons. They reduce a lot of the behaviors that people find are a nuisance. We also found that some of the people that are participating in caregiver programs are not being good neighbors. This is very important. We want to be good neighbors. We do not want to affect the person living next to us adversely. On the same token, some people don't necessarily like living next to a raging pit bull. I don't discriminate. I love and respect all animals. But— There were—I know John came last month, and he talked about some complaints, and before you orchestrated all this. I want to let you know that I personally responded to those. One was in May of 2017. Those animals were not even in a TNR program. It was a heartbreaking situation of a person at their most vulnerable state that was being bullied out of their home by internal and extorted terminators. I personally took responsibility for that at my own expense to help that person out because it was very, very sad, and that took care of the problem. I would say that anybody in the future that is looking to develop a community garden, that possibly they either donate the land to the Community Mosaic, Community Land Trust, or work very closely with Dave Garner and Craig Way because they know how to design a very functional garden without destroying life around it. Okay, so, we do have some recommendations out of that meeting for—we'd like to recommend for council for adding to the ordinances. Right now, we have in there, it simply states, "Do your best not to create a nuisance for your neighbors." There's very easy things that you can do. I'm not sure why people don't take the time to just Google it because it's easy to find out, but if we could add them maybe into property maintenance, that would be helpful so that people that are participating as caregivers take that extra step to do these things that are not annoying your neighbor. We also have a couple more. Do you want to expand on that at all?
I don't have my notes, and I'm not saying a word right now. I'm just—
Okay, zoning. We also have zoning in effect for no home-based breeding in the borough. Zoning has to be enforced by license and inspection. John can't afford zoning. The SPCA cannot enforce the borough zoning. The SPCA cannot enforce borough ordinances. John can issue summons for state dog law. The SPAC can issue summary offenses for the humane, for animal cruelty, and only the police can charge misdemeanor and felony. While these things seem very complex, they're very easy to do as long as we're working as a team. We're not getting much response from license and inspection. I have a whole host of places that need to be addressed that I have nowhere to report them to. So consequently, I'm gonna send them to Mick because so far, he's the only person that—who has the busiest job in the whole borough, who's actually still responding. Thank you, Mick. We talked about some other things in the Animal Committee as far as the wastewater treatment plan. John is now going to be getting donations from the SPCA for blankets, so in the spring and the fall and the wintertime, the dogs can have fresh clean blankets at all times. They will no longer have to launder them because they will always be replenished as fresh new blankets. We also talked about having somebody at the wastewater treatment plant being a contact for when they're running low on things, foods. Somebody has to go and make sure that these foods are not expired.
That's—no, me. That's—Lily calls me up, and I take care of all that. That's—that's my kennel.
Okay. I have been—no, no, 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 no. It's not your kennel because—
It's the borough's kennel.
We have municipalities that are participating in the kennel program. Those municipalities are paying a $500 annual fee to utilize our kennels. They do not all use the services of the borough's ACL. North Comity, for example, uses their own police force to do their animal control. They are paying the animal control—the animal kennel fee, and they have every right to take animals back and forth out of the kennel as they are participating municipality. We have four participating municipalities currently. I have found that, no, those foods and stuff were not being replenished. In fact, I had been paying for them and taking them down and feeding them off.
Can you supply a list of these recommendations to staff?
Yes, and I did—and I—and I did—the committee has the notes, but I didn't know that you guys didn't have them. So absolutely, I will certainly—
Does the person has everything?
He does, but I can send them—it's all on the computer, so I can send them all to all of you.
Very good.
I just want to take a minute to say it's a big, great loss for Bill Sharon. He had true love and dedication to the animals. His advocacy, rescue efforts—it's just gonna be truly mess, and it's a great loss to the community. So in honor of Bill, Bill's memory, I'm gonna—I'm gonna continue pushing for humanity for our animal, our animal ordinances.
Hey, I have a question. The animals, the cats that are TNR, do they get a mark?
They get an ear tip.
They get the ear tip.
Quarter inch taken off the left.
Does everybody know that, or—
Anybody and everybody that knows it, that's involved in the rescue, the Humane Society, anybody that's a caregiver, it's pretty common knowledge.
Okay.
So these groups that you're asking about with the animal control, or the animal committees for the feral animals, how long have they been around in Pottstown?
What, feral animals?
No, the committee that oversees the health and the welfare of these animals, these feral cats.
Well, feral cats are in their own group, so there's different caregivers. So whomever the caregiver is with those—
So would that caregiver be responsible for the health and welfare of that cat?
The caregiver is to do their very best to make sure that if there—if it needs veterinarian care, that it's picked up, if there's new kittens that come along to—to get them early enough to make sure that a newcomer into the group is getting spayed and neutered because you have to be very vigilant. If you're not vigilant, if animals are running around without being spayed and neutered, they reproduce very quickly.
Wouldn't it also make sense to maybe chip them as well?
It's costly. I think it also discourages people from helping.
Do we also have any data on the health and the welfare and the population of these cats? The reason why I'm asking is because when people leave their trash out, animals come in, tear up the bags if they're not inside the containers.
Well, we have containers throughout the borough of Pottstown, both trash and recycle, so that shouldn't be an issue any longer.
It is because, for example, I put a trash bag out—not last night, but the night before—and it was opened up because I didn't take it all the way out to the can. I just threw it outside the door.
So are you saying that was a cat, or was it a restaurant, or was it a possum?
Could've been whatever it was. It was a feral.
A fox or—
It was a feral animal. So I don't know what it was, but what I'm saying is, do we know what the population and the health of the population of this—of these feral cats are? Do we have any data? What can you present?
No, and I don't think that you'll ever get any data because they—because an unspayed animal is gonna continue to reproduce very quickly, and they're all—they're all over.
So if we don't have any kind of control over whether it's catch or release, and there's no data taken, how do we know how to control, how to understand how big this population is? Because I'm getting reports, I'm getting calls from animal control that these—that there's feral animals that—in this case, it was cats—that are doing damage to properties, and they're wondering who they come to about reimbursement.
Again, I spoke to that gentleman in person. I met with him in person. I also spoke to his landlord on two occasions. There are things that they can do to relieve, to alleviate the nuisances to their neighbors. If this person wants to file suit against his neighbor, anybody can do that at any time to anybody. That's the world we live in.
I'm just asking you if there was data taken. I mean, I think there needs to be some sort of control of what we're looking at. I don't know—I couldn't tell you how big these populations are.
You're looking at wild animals like any other, like a fox, like a raccoon—
Like a deer.
—like a possum, like a rabbit, like any other wild animal.
Like deer, for example?
Well, I do actually have some deer now because of all the building. Deer is one of the most recent animals that I have gotten because of urban—suburban sprawl.
Fair enough.
F is ad hoc financial.
Yeah, I'm gonna have an upbeat one, the number of proposals that we got in for the EIP study on Monday.
Underboards, Emergency Services.
Good evening, everyone. On behalf of Goodwill, I too want to pass on our condolences to the friends and family of Mr. Sharon. I know he did a lot for the borough, and he will be missed.
We all made the speak-up for the people in the background.
Okay. Out of the Goodwill Station on High Street, for the month of July, we ran a total of ninety-four emergency calls. Several of those were water rescue calls. Most of them, I believe actually all of them, pertained to street-level flooding, people in cars, things of that nature, and we're pretty happy to report and say that there were no real injuries out of any of those episodes. It was accidental incidents where people were driving into floodwaters, and they were either able to get out on their own, or we were able to get them out with no injury. One of the calls also was a hazmat incident that you did probably see in Mercury, and some things that might've got left out, which were probably rather important, where there—at no point was there any threat to anybody in the community. There was not a large enough release to even make it outside of that building. There was one injury, and he was taken to Pottstown Hospital. He was subsequently flown to Jefferson for further treatment. But all in all, the incident went rather well, and at no point was there any danger to any of the citizens in the area. For training in July, we did three trainings. One on the thirteenth was driver training with a rescue truck. On the fifteenth, we did a pump operations with the Quint, a borough-owned ladder truck. And on the twenty-third, we were out on the river shortly after a rainstorm when the water was up, and we got some pretty good training time out of that. During July, for prevention and community service, on the first, we participated at the kids' carnival at Memorial Park for a short time, the Fourth of July Parade. We did a standby, as did all of the stations, for the Fourth of July fireworks display. And an interesting note to that is, we also brought in some mutual aid for the first time for that. We brought in a UTV, or a four-wheeler, or a small utility vehicle from Ring Hill Fire Company and Upper Potsboro Fire Company to assist with patrol in and around the park. And we'd like to thank them as well. We did send out thank-you letters to them. On the sixth, we did some smoke detectors in a private residence, and the twenty-seventh, we did a safety talk at the Jefferson School Apartments. Fundraising for the month of July, on the first, we did another Fire Academy lunch. On the fourth, of course, we had our breakfast at the station. On the seventh, it was a busy day for us. We did another lunch, and we also had our annual golf outing. I'm happy to say that that raised about $9,000 for us, and it was our best golf tournament in history. On the seventeenth, we provided dinner at the Montgomery County Fire Academy for the Montgomery County Volunteer Fire Chiefs Association. And two upcoming events. Gets a little light in August through the—through the summer. We have a current water rescue class going on. It's a sixteen-hour class, and we have thirteen people enrolled in that, and twelve of those are from the borough. And on the twenty-fifth of August, we're having VFIS, Volunteer Fireman's Insurance Service, come in and do a trailer backing class with the addition of the boat, so it 'll provide us a little additional coverage for our members and drivers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, good evening, everybody. I'm Ian Piles from the Northside Fire Company. I don't have a piece of paper, so I jot it down on my phone. So in July, the Northend turned up forty-one runs. We've been keeping a busy weekly on Thursday nights with our training schedule. We have a handful of juniors that are—or are senior members now, that all graduated, turned eighteen, that are gonna be finishing Montfort Fire Friday one in the next couple weeks. Well, they start in the next couple of weeks, should be done, I think it's a month or two. So we'll have a handful more guys certified out of—we're in town. Hall rentals have been good. We've got two pretty big events that might interest some people here. We have—we're doing a food truck—called a Food Truck Craze, and that's gonna be August thirty-first, starting at four, at the Northend. Everybody should know where that's at. See everybody there. And then we also have a sportsman bingo. Anybody that likes to hunt, fish, anything along those lines, we're on a great big bingo. Should be a really good time. Things are looking up for it, and that is September eighth. If anybody's interested in any of those events, you can reach our Facebook page, call Firehouse, stop in. Got more information.
When's the food truck?
August—
Thirty-first.
Thirty-first.
How many trucks just won?
No, there's—I think there's ten.
What time?
It's starting at four. I think it's four to nine, or four to eight.
And the bingo, what time is the bingo?
That starts at four, but if you want to come, you have to buy your tickets ahead of time. So anybody's interested in that.
And then how we buy tickets? We go to—
Check the Facebook page, call Firehouse, and meet up with one of us. All of us are selling tickets, so all you gotta do is meet up with somebody. If you want a ticket, I'll hang out, and I'll meet up with you after the meeting.
And what's the Facebook page?
It's the Northend Fire Company.
Are they got fishing equipment, too?
Yeah, they have. A little bit of everything.
Good questions. Thank you.
All right, have a good night.
Good evening, council. I have our monthly report. It's not as—not a very big one, but we have one nonetheless. The training, we've had—our crews have been out with—working with hose lines and ladders. We have some people that are in the water rescue class, as Kevin mentioned, and I will not elaborate more on that. We had sixty-four fire poles this past month that we responded to. Fundraising, we don't have anything actively going on, but we will in the next month or two. And I'm not going to elaborate on that simply—simply because I don't have any firm dates on stuff, but we'll have that for next month. As far as the community is concerned, we were out with the rain-shortened night out last night. Looked like a really good time. Everybody was having some fun, and we really enjoyed being there again this year. And we look forward to, you know, working with some more upcoming events with the borough.
Human Relations. Ms. Levingwood.
Good evening, councilors. Councilors, on behalf of the Human Relations Commission, we would like to also express our condolences to the family of Bill Sharon. I'm not sure how many of you realize this, but Bill Sharon was a former commissioner, serving on the commission for a good many years. The rescheduled Community Day was held on Sunday, July fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen, after the thunderstorm ended and the sun came out. We started around one. Some adjustments were made to the event due to the thunderstorms in the morning. Pottstown Hospital, Tower Health, Diamond Credit Union, CCLU, CCSPA were some of the businesses that had information available for everyone who attended. There were children's activities, Zumba workouts were held by Beyond Fun Fitness. There was Latin dances, dance performances, and the finale was by an organization called Rap, Rapping About Prevention, and their presentations that they made included fun food and fitness, e-cigarettes and tobacco education, drug and alcohol education, and anti-lane. It was amazing performance, and it was also a successful event. At the July Human Relations Commission meeting, the commission approved the execution of the memo of understanding between our Human Relations Commission and the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission. Based upon the borough ordinance, the MOU was generated by the State Human Relations Commission. Our commission met with the state commission, and the MOU is a standard operating procedure between our commission and the state commission. Once this MOU is fully executed, the commission will need some resources to be in compliance with the MOU. Some examples will be furniture fixtures, supplies, staffing, and some pop—and training. The commission is creative under borough ordinance, and up to 2017, the borough provided funding for the commission. In 2018, the funding for the commission was apparently lumped into contributions the borough made to outside organizations and was discontinued. The commission does not understand the disappearance of the funding as the other borough commission's boards are funded. The human relations commissioners are all volunteers. We are not rightfully stipend, as the state statute prohibits payments to the commissioners with the exception of reimbursements of expenses related to commission business. The commissioners are dedicated to the duties and responsibilities of the borough ordinance, and we really look forward to working with the borough to be in compliance with the borough ordinance and the MOU with the state Human Relations Commission.
Thank you. Land Bank.
Deb Penrod is not able to make it tonight for the land bank or the library reports. I'll try to give an update on the land bank as I'm sitting in on those meetings. So they're currently reviewing their policies and procedures, a draft of which will be brought for review and approval at Borough Council when they're ready. Other than that, several members are coordinating a time to travel and attend a meeting in Dauphin County and Philadelphia, where they have land banks already established, and it is hoped that information gathered there will help to inform the creation of the policies and procedures for the borough. Thank you.
Thank you. All of it, boys and girls, Constable Kirkland here reporting. Monday, Pottstown School District. Anyone? Okay. Mayor's report.
So Rotary was able to plant the ponder trees in the nursery behind the Hill School with the aid of Tom Hilton. I was also a panelist on the Lutheran Churches event called Who Are Our Neighbors, along with Peggy Lee Clark, Stephen Rodriguez, and representatives from the hospital and the cluster. We had the Habitat Home Dedication to Tamara Charles, which was a pretty phenomenal event. I want to thank everyone who volunteered and all the members of Habitat to build a phenomenal home for Tamara and her children. Henry's had their summer picnic. We had our uniform and non-uniform pension board meetings. The Pottstown Bike Race, which was a well-attended event despite the rain. And last night, we had our National Night Out. Again, unfortunately, it had to end a little soon because of the rain, but we were able to stay out till about, I think, 7:30. And I want to thank all the volunteers in the community for coming out. Pottstown Athletic League is having their hockey fall league registration for ages 6 through 18 for boys and girls. You can go to their website, PottstownPal.org to register. The Rockstar Roller Derby Girls are having their new skater training and tryouts on August 13th from 7:00 to 9:00 at Ringing Rocks. And I got my braces off.
So are you trying out?
No, no. I barely can walk on my feet without rollers and skates, so.
Thank you. Management report.
Well, we're all here very, you know, sad to hear the news about Bill Sharon's passing. He was our 17-year property maintenance inspector for the Licensing and inspections Department. Bill is a great asset here to the borough, not only as an employee, but also as a volunteer for numerous human and animal rights and animal welfare organizations. And as an organizer for several community events, he played a key role in the community. He'll be remembered for his unwavering passion for Pottstown and success in putting Pottstown on the map with events like the Pet Fair and the Eco Fest. These events will continue as the spirit lives on through the lives of many of the organizers and committee members he touched. I'm told that this year's Pet Fair will be held in memory of his name and dedicated to his life and mission. Pottstown was certainly a better place because of Bill and he'll truly be missed. In other news, I do want to thank the County Planning Commission, State Representatives Hennessy and Quigley, as well as Senator Mensch, the DEP, FEMA and PMA, for accommodating an urgent meeting at the request of the borough and paid to discuss grant opportunities for emergency repairs to underground stormwater. Meeting was productive and all, none of the grant sources were perfect fits. We did identify several that were possibilities. So over the next several months, we anticipate on applying for Montgomery County Local Share Account funding and Act 13 flood mitigation funding through, both through the Department of Community and Economic Development to identify engineering and construction solutions for priority repairs. Also on the grant front, I'm happy to announce we were awarded the TCBI Planning Grant for the area of Keim Street Industrial Highway to look at a zoning overlay district that would allow for more business-serving uses in our existing industrial parks, recognizing that industry has changed, has become automated. The amount of land that they once needed may no longer be necessary and wanting to provide them with more creative options so that they can better use their properties. There's been lots of good news in the borough too. We've had many ribbon cuttings this past month. We've had a new ice cream shop open up, Brew Pub. We vitalized offices in the BB and T Building downtown, as well as the opening of a high-end private car club at Third and Hanover Street. We're also seeing many rehabs in residential properties and property values are rising. There are lots of positive redevelopments happening across all sectors and we expect this to continue into the beginning of 2019. Lastly, negotiations with AFME bargaining unit are set to begin on August 16th, so we look forward to having more updates on that.
Very good. Thank you, sir. We now have our presentation, Gold Ball Camp.
I was contacted by Marvin Pearson. Unfortunately, he is not able to make it tonight. We're going to see if he is maybe available on Monday. If not, we'll reschedule him for later.
How about make it Monday? Rachel.
Not a problem. Just bring this up really quick. Thank you to your staff for having it set up, so we appreciate it. So I'm just going to stand here if that's okay, that way I can collect and also address everyone. So my name's Rachel Riley from the Valley Forge Tourism and Convention Board. For those of you who aren't familiar, we promote Montgomery County as a tourism destination and we do promote all of Montgomery County. So even though our name is Valley Forge, we don't just stick to the Valley Forge and King and Prussia area. We just identify with that name and our brand because there's almost 18 Montgomery Counties in the United States, but Valley Forge is internationally and nationally known. So that's why we identify with that name. So who we are, as you may know, we're actually funded by the hotel tax, so our mission is to bring overnights into Montgomery County, as well as promote tourism in all of our towns, so restaurants and other types of attractions. Our organization is structured by sales and marketing, so we have a sales team that goes to conferences, trade shows, to try to bring in big conventions, group tours and things like that into Montgomery County. And we also have a marketing department that promotes all of those things that we're doing, as well as everything to see and do right here in Montgomery County. And we have more than 500 members and those include anywhere from, we have 75 hotels in Montgomery County, we have 1,600 restaurants, excuse me. We have more than 50 golf courses, that's 300,000 yards to play. We also have almost 100 trails, tons of attractions, and more than 200 arts and culture venues. So all of those things are what we represent. And tourism is actually a pretty big business in Montgomery County. It accounts for $1.5 billion, that's with a B. So lots of people come to Montgomery County and stay overnight and also, you know, spend money boosting that positive economic impact. And the way we promote Montgomery County is by using different brands. So we have different logos here you can see to represent, as I said, some of those, the restaurants, so that's Crave Monco. We also have revolutionary events to represent meetings. We have our weddings brand, Arts Monco brand, Patriot Trails, which is our history brand. We have a sports brand, adventure, golf, shopping, of course. And we also have, our latest brand is the Monco Makers, which I'll talk about a little later, but that represents all of our breweries, wineries, and distilleries in Montgomery County. And part of the way that the marketing team specifically promotes Montgomery County is by using things like social media, obviously, our website, but also videos. And we do an out-of-TV, an out-of-market TV campaign usually every summer. We'll be promoting in northern New Jersey, parts of New York, and other areas. We're actually expanding to Boston, Pittsburgh, to try to bring in visitors that are going to come stay overnight in Montgomery County. And I do have a video to play, but not really going to be able to hear the audio, sorry about that, but hopefully you can kind of get a safe floor. All of those things that I talked about, the different brands and everything there is to see and hear in Montgomery County. Is this going to be on TV? It is on TV right now, yep. So that's the same do here in Montgomery County. We also promote a summer package, so we put together a package working with certain hotels throughout Montgomery County. And then what we do is we partner with other member attractions. So if you book it overnight in Montgomery County, you can actually get some deals. So maybe it's a free pass or a discount to Elm Park Zoo or the casino or something like that. And part of the way we get our message out there is by using different publications. And that's part of the reason I brought up a bunch of bags here. We, I brought you some branded Valley Forge Tourism lunch bags that you can enjoy. And inside them are actually these publications. So we have our Visitors Guide, which is annual. Our Crave Monco Restaurant Dining and Drinks Guide is done twice a year. Our Monco Explorer Newspaper is actually done quarterly. This one's not out yet, but as you can see, we have Bike Monco. And actually, the Schuylkill River Trail, which runs through Pottstown, is featured on the cover of that. Our Monco Golf Guide is done annually and on the cover of that is something I'll talk about in a minute as well, which was the LPGA Symmetra Tour that was, you may or not remember or heard about, which was held right nearby in Ravensclaw Golf Club in May. And we also have, one of our newer publications is the Arts Monco Guide, and that's also going to be twice a year. That one debuted in the spring at the Flower Show where more than 250,000 people were going through and passing by our booth and we'll come out with a fall one as well. So part of my job as the Communications and Media Relations Manager is to get the word out. So I do try to go to towns throughout Montgomery County to let you know who we are, what we're doing, and also, you know, kind of bring it home and let you know what we're doing to promote your town specifically. And this is just an idea of all that we're doing to get the word out about Montgomery County and Valley Forge, King of Prussia, all of our wonderful towns in print, in digital, TV, and all that good stuff. Some of you may or not have heard that we have a mascot. His name's Monty. He's a fox and he's super fun. And he turned one this year. We debuted him last year at our golf outing and travel rally day. So this year, he turned one. And he actually travels around, goes to different events for us. He's really fun for the kids and just kind of that face of travel for Mont though. And we actually have him travel with our kiosk, which is staffed by people in our organization. And then he can stand there, people can post photos, it's fun for social media. And some of the places that our kiosk travels to all across the county include some recent events, which was the USA BMX Stars and Stripes National. That was in early July, right here in Pottstown at Trilogy Park. We also had the 2018 27th Annual Pottstown Rumble. That's held right here in Pottstown. It's actually the world's largest outdoor volleyball tournament. It was held in June and that includes more than 4,000 players and more than 400 nets. So it's a pretty well-known event and that's right here at Pottstown. Yes?
Yeah. Would you face the camera and we keep that?
Oh, sure. I'm sorry. Which part? Both of those events or the rumble?
Yes, both of those.
Sure. Hi, Rachel Riley, Valley Forge Tourism. I'm sorry that I have not been addressing the camera. Some of the events that Valley Forge Tourism and our mascot, Monty, travel to with our kiosk include the USA BMX Stars and Stripes National, that was held in early July at Trilogy Park in Pottstown. And there was also the 2018 27th Annual Pottstown Rumble. It's the world's largest outdoor volleyball tournament. It was held in June with more than 4,000 players and 400 nets.
World's largest?
World's largest, that's right. We actually submitted that event for an award, so stay tuned. That's something that we also do at our organization. We look for, we apply for awards and we look for opportunities to promote Montgomery County through that sort of avenue as well. And sporting events is one of those that we submit as well. So the LPGA Symmetra Tour, oh, sorry. Monty also has lots of friends in the area with university partnerships. We like to pair him up and we do fun videos with, you know, university mascots. We've also done things with Swoop from the Eagles and he was actually filming with the Phillies last week, so he's pretty popular. And we talked about the traveling kiosk. So the Valley Forge Invitational was actually the inaugural LPGA Symmetra Tour event. It was held right here in Montgomery County, right nearby at Ravensclaw Golf Club in May. It was an awesome event. There was more than 130 female golfers from all across the world. There's actually a Swedish woman is the one who ended up winning. She set a course record with her win. And it was a great event. The last full week in May. And the Meet the Pros party was held also in the Pottstown area at the Sunnybrook Ballroom. They did a beautiful, fantastic, phenomenal job between the lighting and the music and the food was amazing. And the women who, again, come from all over the world were really impressed with this area, with the people being so welcome and the course, you know, they really loved it and they look forward to coming back, which fingers crossed it will hopefully be here again and we'll be making announcements about that soon. And one of the great things about this event was it was in the news a lot. So since February, this tournament was actually mentioned more than 100 times over the course of those several months. And that includes, you know, player profiles, different stories about the course, about the tournament itself. And that went to local media, so TV, print, digital, but also all across the country and even the world. There were little blurbs in places like Sweden and Canada. And one of the great things about this event that we'll be bringing up at the end of September is a check presentation to the Pottstown Area Health and Wellness Foundation. They were one of the sponsors of the event and they will actually benefit from some of the funds that came out of it and it will go to help the Pottstown community. And as I said, our Monco Makers is our newest and latest brand, so it promotes all of our award-winning breweries, wineries, and distilleries right here in Montgomery County. We've got some right here in Pottstown as well. We're promoting this all over the place. We actually created an app that folks can use, they can download on their phone and they can check into places that are part of our Monco Makers, quote unquote. And then as you do that, you can earn rewards, like we have t-shirts and things like that. And it's just fun. You can find out about places to stay. So if you want to do tours, you know, you can find a hotel. You can also find out about big events coming up, beer fests, swimming fests, and things like that. And this is our Monco Makers video, again, highlights with the audio. But it actually features a distillery right here in Pottstown, the Manitowoc Steel Works, which is one of the best.
Is the Week Me featured on that as well?
I'm sorry?
Is the Week Me featured on that as well?
I don't believe they were in that one. We only were able to film at about 3:00 because they were trying to put something together and we only had 30 seconds, so. But I do believe that they're on our list and we're trying to get out to all of them and, you know, connect with them on social and share some photos. So I'm sure we'll be doing more videos with places like that. I'm trying, I have to talk too fast, but I know I only have 10 minutes because there's other people, so I'm trying to be respectful. But we do a lot of stuff here. We also have partnership with SEPTA, it's the ISEPTA Monco Program. So people who have their SEPTA card can take it to certain participating businesses in Montgomery County. ISEPTA Philly does the same thing. And you can get certain discounts. So a movie theater might offer like a free bag of popcorn or something like that. So you can check out all of, there's more than 22 places, I believe, in Montgomery County that are participating in this. And it's iseptamonco.com if you're interested in that. And of course, we encourage everyone to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram and see everything that we're doing, you know, follow us, we'll follow you back, connect with us. And definitely let us know about any businesses or things that we should be partnering up with because we'd love to get more involved. And check out ValleyForge.org. We always have everything that's going on here. We have a calendar of events, we have a blog, and we're always promoting everything to see and hear about Montgomery County. Any questions?
One.
Yes.
What's the name of?
It's Monco Makers. Yep.
How many, I know the LPGA that they had, do you know how many people came to watch that at all?
We don't. We're, we guesstimated between 800 and 1,000. The LPGA says that a beginner tour can get anywhere from 1,000, 5,000 to 10,000 people, you know, as the tour comes back and that people know about it. So, but we didn't have anyone there counting people, so it was kind of hard to tell. But we figured about anywhere between 800 and 1,000 over the course of, it's a three-day event. Technically, it was all week because the women come, they practice, they actually worked with local kids on one of the days during a clinic. They do a pro-am. Vince Kapali was there. And then they actually play in the tournament for three days. And with everyone that was from all over the world, we actually had two women from Montgomery County, Emily Gimple, who's a professional golfer, and Isabella Delicio. She's actually at Notre Dame. And Isabella actually made it into the final round, which was pretty cool, so, because she's an amateur, so. But they were both invited to play since they were local. Well, as I said, you guys can keep going and if you don't mind, I'll just bring your bags up.
Sure.
So... If you don't mind, I'll just bring your bags up. So Monty, you don't have to leave it any further. Bye. Thank you so much for your time.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Okay, next is, uh, the presentation about the report of Pottstown finances. Probably not as light jailbills.
You guys have a mascot?
What's that, Bill? Do we have a mascot? No, we don't have a mascot.
Good evening, everyone.
No bags, Sean.
They couldn't give you one, and we go, five enough.
Good evening, everyone. Um, my name is Bill Brislowski. I'm the partner with Maile LLP that oversees the annual audit for the borough. And to my right is Andrew Steer. He's the manager that sees the day-to-day operations of the audit. On behalf of Maile, our cadences, the borough and the laws of the employee. And I'm going to try to make this fast because I know you have a busy agenda. I'm just going to touch on the highlights. Uh, I believe council's had their report hopefully for about a month now, so if you have any questions, please ask at the end when we get through this. Uh, the large report is actually the annual audit. If you turn to page four, page four, it continues over to page six. That's Maile's opinion on the financial statements, uh, for the audit, and that opinion is basically a clean opinion again for the, uh, calendar year ended December 31st, 2017. Starting on page seven and continuing through to page, um, it's actually a rather large section. Page 20, um, is the management discussion and analysis. Basically, that is what it's titled. It's management's, uh, analysis of how the year went. There's some data, financial information there, and some highlights for the year, why some of the numbers are up or down, or some of the things that are anticipated to happen in the, uh, near future for the borough. Starting on page 21 and continuing to page 32 are the main statements of the borough. That's the assets, liabilities, revenues, and expenditures for the borough, and all its funds, general fund, and all the smaller funds, pensions and so forth, and so on, the sewer, et cetera. Beginning on page 33 and continuing for majority of the remainder of the statement are the notes that support the numbers that are on those financial statements. Main highlights in those, besides the accounting policies, uh, as far as capital additions this year, the, two of the main things were the walk, bike path in the borough, the work that's been started on that, and also the work up at the airport. On the debt side, of course, the, the major transaction there was the issuance of the 17 series to refund the 2012 series that was in place. If you turn to the back of the statements, starting on page 106 and continuing through the end of the report, that's the Single Audit Act, uh, that we conduct on the federal funds of the borough. Two major funds that were audited this year were the transportation part and also the airport, uh, the airport funding. Uh, we had one finding, uh, on the transportation service, and that is the charter services require an annual, or quarterly report be filed on the charter services. Those filings were missed. Management has since put in place a policy to have two employees that will oversee that and make sure that that doesn't happen again. Those missed reports have since been filed as of July 31st of 18. That's, yeah, just a filing. Uh, and I think our conclusion was it was just the transition employees with Mr. Pendley leaving, and it just got oversight on the part. Any questions? Any questions on the main report? There's two smaller letters that you have. Um, the thinner of the two is our recommendation letter. There's two recommendations for the borough. Uh, one, um, that was one from last year, it was Conflict of Interest Policy, and that's just that the borough adopted its own formal policy. I believe you sign off on something from the state, but it's best practice is that the borough have its own policy in place for that. The second comment, um, on the pension plans, the, the investment activity, uh, it was noted that the activity wasn't recorded into the financial, uh, software system of the boroughs until the end of the year. We just recommend that that be done monthly. It's not to say that management's not overseeing the activity and checking the reconciliations and stuff of what's going on, but that's done on separate spreadsheets, it's not done, updated in the software till the end of the year, so our recommendation is that that be kept up to date monthly so that management can access those numbers time during the year. The final letter is, um, what used to be called the Audit Committee Letter. Basically says to council that, uh, there were, there was one new policy adopted during the year by the borough. It had to do with some disclosures regarding the, regarding the, um, OPEB, which is the, uh, Other Post Employee Benefit Plan of the borough. There were some new, uh, pronouncements that came out by the Government Standards Board that had to be adopted by the borough. So that was adopted for this year, and it's included in the main audit report. Uh, secondly, it has a list in the back of all our journal entries that were made in the audit. It might look like a lot, half of them were actually audit entries that management proposed because we come in at a certain date to start the audit, and they're still working on certain reconciliations to finish up, and if they find some things, they'll give us additional adjustments to make to the numbers before we finalize the financial statements. The other half of the entries that we did, most of those relate to the pensions, and that's a timing issue. Typically, the pension reports from the actuaries come in after we start the audit, so it's hard for management to have those adjustments in there when they're going to be reports after we start the audit. Finally, I'd like to just add that, and it's included in here, that Mr. Keller and Miss Lee's staff have always been very helpful and courteous and professional when we come out to do the audit, and makes a good much. Any questions that we can answer? I know I ran through that quickly. There are none? Thank you very much.
Okay, Tri-County Adult, or Active Adult Center. Mr. Parks, evening.
Good evening. So here this evening, just to give you a quick update, Tri-County Active Adult Center. Well, first of all, I'm Brian Parks, the executive director of Tri-County Active Adult Center. Formerly the Pottstown Area Senior Center. We changed our name, uh, about two years ago to better reflect the region and the people that we serve. We purchased the old Pottstown Health Club, uh, probably six years ago now, and, um, spent $1.7 million rehabilitating that into one of the premier, uh, senior centers in the region. And, uh, we're proud that, uh, over the past year and a half since we've opened, uh, it's been very successful. The center itself operates five days a week, provides a range of programs and activities to keep older adults active, engaged in the community, and living independently longer. Uh, you don't need to be a member to participate. About half of our activities are free, and others are offered at a low cost, between like a dollar and $3 a session. In the past 12 months, we have served more than 18,000 free meals. We cook those on-site, and, uh, that is one of our actual lunches pictured on the, on the sheet there. That's a pork slider, uh, with some pickled vegetables and, uh, potato salad. We served 1,800 individuals at least once. Uh, they visited more than 37,000 times, and we averaged more than 150 people a day coming into the center. Uh, it got to the point, we actually have leased the parking lot across the street to, uh, to expand our parking. Approximately 900 of the seniors that we served, uh, in the past year live in 19464. Um, that's about 80% of the people we served. I know that's a bit broader than just the borough, but, um, that's as far as I could break it down. Uh, probably another, um, 12% are from Chester County and 8% are from Parks. As an economic engine, uh, we spent more than $600,000 last year on salaries, goods and services, employing 10 people, and, uh, I believe helping to boost our local economy. And research has shown that organizations like the Tri-County Active Adult Center save seniors money, reduce the number of severity of falls, and help create a better, and help create better health outcomes, reducing both morbidity and mortality. On the back of your sheet, you've got a sample of our programs offered. We have probably more than 40 programs and services each and every week, and, uh, we keep people busy and out of trouble. Funding is at the bottom there. You'll see we do pretty much everything we can to, to raise money. Speaking of money, I'd like to respectfully request that the council consider funding us again, uh, when the opportunity arises in the future. The funding that was due, it was, was a pretty significant amount to our budget, and, uh, we'd certainly appreciate it if, uh, it could be found again in budget to, uh, to help sustain us as part of this community. Moving on, uh, we've got an event coming up this fall, a new event. We're calling Cheese Toberfest. It's going to be Memorial Park on October 13th. It's going to be a grilled cheese contest and tasting, uh, with a beer garden, uh, which I'll be back to ask permission for at a later date. And, um, we've got a band coming, uh, some vendors. It should be a great day, and it's going to be a great fundraiser for the center. Can I answer any questions related to the center?
So 50 is considered senior?
We don't call them, we, well, we don't call them seniors.
Okay, good, because I'm a, you should 50, so I was going to ask.
As am I. Older adults, active, older adults, active adults.
Okay.
We'll call you whatever you want. Other questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Great Pottstown tennis. So what's the latest?
Hopefully it's the greatest. Good evening. My name is Jeff Cardwell. I'm a board member of the Great, uh, Great Pottstown Tennis Academy. I have my colleague here, Dave Faulkner, who's also a, a board member. Uh, tonight, we wanted to present our revised plan, uh, from previously. We have removed the, uh, the module structure that was originally proposed. We have taken that out of the proposal. We still would like to move forward with adding one additional tennis court to the existing two courts that are there. Uh, in, in the near future, add a bubble over the three courts, but the bubble will be inside the confines of the fenced-in property of the, the tennis courts at the existing time. We are asking for approval tonight with the stipulation, uh, from, uh, the council here that we work alongside with borough staff. They sent over a requirement that we must meet for this project to move forward. We're working with our engineering firm now to finalize all of the documents that will be necessary to present back to the borough staff, uh, with the necessary changes that came about from that. We also work, working with the Parks and Rec team. We have, uh, two trees that we still need to take out of the plan instead of three, but we present tonight that we will re, uh, replace the two trees with four trees. Uh, Park and Rec staff will determine where the trees will go, the calipers of the trees, and the type of trees. So we will meet that need of, from Park and Rec. So that was our presentation tonight with the revision. We have the law, uh, the signed letter to present to you guys tonight.
Why are you removing the trees?
Uh, it's due to the construction of the third court here. It will be, uh, in the way of the, uh, I want to say disturbance of the soil, digging up the ground and bringing in other, uh, soils and so forth. We actually will probably, uh, deconstruct and so forth of the tree, but we know the importance of trees. And I'm a former park ranger, so we want to make sure that we double what was there due to the size of the trees, so we figured four trees for the two that were there.
Okay. So there won't be a modular unit, but you're still considering the air support structure?
Yes. That'll be possibly in the here or so, and it'll be right over the three courts itself. It won't go beyond the fenced-in area.
Yeah, for the sake of time, I could talk to Mike later on. I just have a few questions about the details, about the, you know, the aesthetics of it and if there's any compressors running, because they are close, close to, uh, your residence. If I can talk to Michael.
So that was actually one of the comments on our, on our review letter, um, that we sent, that we sent to that, to the applicant, um, you know, to, to show, I believe that's still in there, to show the location of
Correct.
The future air support structure. Basically, like the footprint of it, and then any, any services like compressors or air handling units that would be associated with that.
Just like to add for clarity, the, the request here is, uh, to move on this plan. That does not include the air support structure this time. You're not giving a yay or nay for that. The request was that the footprint of that air, uh, support structure be included in this plan because what is done during this phase does have bearing on, uh, what would happen during that air support structure phase installation. That whole issue of the air support structure is the intention to, uh, have some public meetings with the community beforehand, uh, to make sure that the, those comments are gathered and the community is polled. So just want to be clear that while it is, it does bear on what's going on with this phase, there is not a request to authorize it at that time. There is further work that needs to be done with respect to that. Will there be a permanent structure? That's a permanent structure.
Actually, the type we're planning on making, no, would not be. It is a type you could take down and put up as you need to.
Right.
You turn down compressor, it's weighted down and so forth. You can pack it up and move it on.
But from a, like permitting and stormwater standpoint, it'd be considered a permanent structure, but, yeah.
And those are some of the, uh, issues that were stipulated in the letter with stormwater and parking and so forth, just with the additional, uh, third court going on that we would address as well.
For clarity also, the, the other thing, the, the initial plan you would have looked at, there were a lot more considerations that needed to be made because of that modular that removed, all of that modular was a decision that, uh, better suited the park space, it removed the necessity to deal with, uh, sewer, uh, with, uh, water service or with electrical service. So, um, this, uh, this scenario, the only thing that has to be considered is stormwater. This plan does indicate how stormwater would be dealt with as long as it's applicable. Uh, there is an existing stormwater line that runs under the proposed court. Um, we, the request would be to work with staff to determine whether that stormwater line needs to be relocated. If it does need to be relocated, it is indicated on this plan how that would be done. Would be an extension from the existing inlet that runs over, uh, following the recommendations of Cedarville, how that will connect up to the existing stormwater structure. If it is determined that the condition of, uh, the existing line is both in good condition and will not be affected, uh, by the addition of the court, um, then the request would be that, uh, GPTL is not required to add that stormwater, but, uh, we would defer to the, to the staff. In this case, Doug Yerger of Public Works, because he's more knowledgeable of, of the particular requirements for that. But it is a requirement, uh, that that be addressed in some ways, stormwater addressed. For the letter from Cedarville, which, believe you have something from GPTL that says they agree to those, um, I think there's 20-some items on the revised letter.
Yeah, just to clarify, the letter was, the letter was in your packets. It's, it was, it's on the Borough Pottstown letterhead. So this is actually, um, a letter that was prepared by Cedarville Engineering, and then also our, our staff took a look at it, um, and, and added our comments to it as well. So, um, we were, we were able to reduce a number of comments down significantly, um, because of the removal of the modular, um, structure. The plan that you're seeing here tonight is not the, is not the, the final plan, but it's pretty, going to be pretty close to what, to what you're, you're going to see. Plus, uh, any changes that are be pretty close to what you're going to see, plus any changes that are needed as outlined in this letter. GPTL has responded to us and essentially agreed to make all of the changes that are recommended in the letter. And I'll also note that we have executed a use agreement with them that does speak to the use of a modular structure. Now that that structure is no longer in play, we would also recommend that we remove that item from the agreement, just so everything makes sense. That doesn't mean that you couldn't come to consideration of that in the future, but we want to make sure that what we're agreeing to is what you're actually doing.
So, yeah, just so for Monday night, really why they're here, is they presented the plan, you had approved the park use agreement previously, you said you wanted to see the plan before they moved forward, so hopefully now they've done that. So your action is to basically approve the plan subject to compliant with the staff recommendations.
Very good, we'll listen for Monday evening.
Love it.
Thank you. Padita. This is Doobie.
This is under our point. Is Dave? Dave?
So, my name is Sheila Dugan, I'm the Main Street Manager here in the Downtown District. It was just about six years ago that I first came to council and met council and-
We need to address council and speak elaborately.
And was very new to not only Pottstown, but to the whole Downtown District as a whole. Council at the time had asked that we work together as a team and improve upon what Padita had been doing through the economic problems and things that happened nationwide. So in 2012, Padita lost its Main Street designation from DCE date. The Main Street Manager at that time quit, we did not receive approval for the exit grant from council and Padita was owed by more than half of its building owners their assessments for many years. The Board of Padita was tired, a bit jaded, as well as the businesses and the building owners, and it was time to start chipping away at that mountain. And council members had requested that Padita do so. In 2018, we are happy to say that Padita has a new five-year strategic plan that we're confident in and hope that you all review and give input to if there are additions that you'd like to see or things you'd like to change. We've received over $46,000 in grants since 2016. We've clocked over 4,500 hours in volunteer time since 2016. Only six building owners are currently in arrears and some of that is due to bankruptcy. We have a new more energized board of seven volunteers, Pam is here. Since 2016, many feet of snow have been removed from our parking areas and we continue to work with the businesses to make sure that they're able to be open quickly after our snowstorms. We've joined with paid and Hope Art's Run to create additional events such as the Fete Enblanc. Padita now has a secretary who AARP is paying and has allowed us to gather a lot of information in just a very short time to get our records current and keep them current and maintained. The mountain we once forefaced has become a little bit more of a hill and council members have supported us and we hope will continue to support us as we move forward. In 2018, we are seeking a variety of ways to increase our budget with minimal impact to investors, landlords, business owners and the community. We've started a membership to Padita, which will allow additional businesses to pay into our marketing, but they won't, they're not in the Padita district. So places like Art Fusion are able to pay into Padita so that we can help market them as well. We're asking businesses to give a small amount annually, we're still working on that plan, but that is moving forward and we'll also continue to seek for smaller grants and sponsorships which do not require match money out of our budget currently. We're happy to celebrate our third season at the Pottstown Farm. Our grant was $15,000 this season from Health and Wellness and we just placed an additional LOI for more money so that next year we can not only employ a few people at the farm, but it will also increase our vendors. One of the issues we faced was that farm, because we're a new farmer's market, some of the farmers are already committed, but they would send product to us, we just need people who will then sell the product. So we're looking to increase some small part-time employment through that. We have over 25 vendors currently. We continue with the Two Bike Club that has more than 40 children each week who try the product of the week and they get a $5 coin to then go and shop the market. The 5K run to the market raised over $1,200 this year and throughout the last year, more than 17 zip codes have visited the Pottstown Farm, so we are attracting people outside and we hope to continue to attract those visitors more. The new brochure, this is a mock-up of what this will look like, we have gathered all of the information and we are cleaning it up for the businesses. So yes, we finally have something in print that we will start to see. We will start with a smaller amount printed professionally simply because we already know that there are things happening in buildings that we hope in the next year will come to fruition and we want to make sure that we can include them quickly at that time. So we'll kind of be doing small amounts for a little bit until that goes on. Our records being updated and being concise until we have our doing from the businesses, the brochure will be done in small increments. We've created a new website, please visit it, it is a little bit under construction still. We are completing the business directory. It was important to make this change because our old website was very complicated and very hard to get instantaneous things up there. When we deal with things with weather and stuff like that that we can change continually, it takes me about 30 seconds to do it on our new website, so that was very necessary. The I Pick Pottstown campaign continues to attract our investors from outside and we support paid with that. We have earmarked $1,000 to help paid in promoting the I Pick Pottstown program with future banners and flags for the Downtown District. But the Downtown new logo symbolizes movement for the Downtown businesses that already call it home. So our tagline of turn it up, turn it up, turn it on and turn it around is to show movement. That tagline can be changed as things start to stabilize and we hope that people will start to recognize this as the Downtown. People that are already here, I think our businesses want to have an identity and this is what we have come up with. We're looking to engage the community of arts, we have two projects that we are starting to work on so that we can get council's approval as we move forward with it. We'll bring out more information. One is creating art on the solar powered trash cans, so they are film, I guess like skins that they're creating for working with Art Fusion, we'll be moving to get those numbers and everything in place and then present that further down the road. The other one is with Monco Community College, we are working then to have the drainage, they've done this project in Reading so that people are aware, it's side wall guard that will be permanent for people to be aware that the drains go right to the river and therefore they shouldn't be littering in the drains and keeping things- So those are two projects we hope to be able to tell you about in the future. We are ready now to live up to our mission of fostering a downtown that people want to come, work, play, visit, and we are marketing all of that for the future. That's it. But I did forget one thing that we are also doing, this is just first, they have mocked up on my end of it, but it is something that we're going to work with, with real estate agents, so we have three real estate agents who are embedded in Pottstown. When they buy, or I'm sorry, when they sell a home to a home buyer who is going to live in that house, we're going to have our Downtown businesses donate gift cards and they will get this packet with different gift cards and things that bring people into the Downtown. So this is a project that is also, it's very small stage, but it is definitely going to be worked on and committed. So we hope you're happy with all of this, we are going to be giving out all this information if you guys approve it to all of our businesses, all of our building owners. This information has been a long time coming and we know that, but we are ready now to have it, so we're very excited and hope that you guys all are as well.
Have you had conversations with Valley Forge Tourism?
We have. We have several of our businesses, as a matter of fact, for the LPGA, Brumby's was very involved in giving lunches out to all the volunteers for that. We've been in touch with, several of our businesses are part of that, Make It Monco, so we're working on that.
And you found them to be helpful to us?
Yes.
Sheila, I have to say this is phenomenal.
Thank you.
I appreciate the effort that you've put into this, this is exactly what I've been looking for and I'm really proud of you guys, thank you.
One thing I'd like to ask is, this is Pottstown, Downtown Pottstown, would you be, do you also include like the Carousel area as well?
Well, the district itself was created 30 years ago, well before I was even in Pottstown, so the district is just a small six-block area. There is process that you can go through to create a bigger space, bigger district and down the road, that is definitely being investigated, but things like the Carousel and Cobble Dell, that's why we wanted to do the membership, so that we can promote them in our brochures and let people know that it's not just Downtown you can come to, we have a lot of activity around.
That was one of the first things when I thought, when I saw turn it up, turn it on, turn it around, turn it around could be the Carousel, to pull it in, turn it up could be the bars, turn it on, you know, those kind of things, those kind of attractions on High Street would be an excellent attraction, plus partnering with Valley Forge.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
I agree with the mayor, that is- Oh, I'm sorry, I agree with the mayor, that's it. Your pamphlet presentation is excellent, I like it. I just have a question about the website. Can people get notifications, you know, everything, every time you go online, they just say, put your email here, that you get flooded with emails?
Yes, the website is still a little bit under construction, but we are getting all of those pieces together. It's really pretty well developed, we do have all the information for the Fete Enblanc, the farmer's market, most of my businesses are on there, we have a couple more things we need to plug in on those parts. It's really been a huge help that I have now a secretary who doesn't come out of our budget, so she's been able to do a lot of paperwork and catch up things and I've been able to start looking for grants and things that will help in the bigger picture, so. Linda Jacobs also did all this design work, she is Downtown Design, she sublets an office from us and she has done a lot of work for Padita, so we'd like to thank her for that as well.
Sheila, one more question, I'm sorry, did you say this was a mock-up?
Yes, because if you look at it, businesses are repeated, yeah.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Okay, how about the Padita extension?
So, I just want to let everyone know that there was a misprint on the expiration on that, council actually has until December 31st, 2018 to approve the plan for services provided by Padita. That is what is needed in order to ensure the future existence of Padita as an organization. But council will need to advertise and adopt it in ordinance, probably advertise sometime in October, November timeframe in order to meet that December 31st, 2018 deadline. So the plan that was presented and that you've handed out in your packets, that is what will need to be essentially approved before the end of the year.
Okay. All right, 15 is keep, Keystone Employment Economic Plan.
Yeah, so this is basically an advertisement for a public hearing so that council can send the specific plan to the Planning Commission for their comment and recommendation prior to council officially adopting this specific plan. So it has to follow the normal process as permitted by the MPC.
Does it require action?
Yes, action to authorize the advertising of the public.
We'll list that for Monday. Civil Service Eligibility List Approved.
Yeah, so we have the list that was approved by the commission, it's up to the council to ratify that.
Okay, put that on for Monday. 17, a resolution, Montgomery County has your mitigation plan update.
Okay, so this is the five-year plan update by the county, from what I understand there were people from the borough that weighed in on this plan and basically it's- recommends mitigation activities to reduce losses to light property affected by natural hazards.
Okay, we'll do that Monday. 17, there is 18, fee schedule. This came out of the ad hoc committee, yes. Fee schedule. There was an ad hoc oversight committee and one of the recommendations is that staff review all the fees to make sure that we are not giving anything away, leaving anything on the table and I think your staff did a thorough check of all the costs involved for fees that we pass on.
Correct, and this is a partial list that we're proposing for adoption at the mid-year time. We did go through our fees and just to give you a little bit of history on it, prior to this, generally for any fees that we charge for services, we've used, you know, our cost plus 135%. With increasing pension obligations, increasing healthcare, in a lot of cases, our costs are actually more than 135%. So in working with Janice, myself and the committee, we actually came up with a fee formula that looks at an employee's hourly rate and all the benefits that are associated with that employee, taxes as well, that would be paid as a part of having that employee here, as well as the cost basically to keep the lights on in the building. Everything that, all the costs that are required to provide a service from a certain employee, those tasks were then looked at by each department head, they assigned an hour value or, you know, a minute value in some cases to the various tasks that are required to complete a particular service and that's how we came up with the fee formula to make sure that what we're charging is actually what it costs. And in a lot of cases, we found our fees were about 30% under really what we're paying for on the employee level. So with that, we have four fees we'd like to update, clean and leave, return check fee, fee in lieu of park shooting trees and oak smes trees, and then there are several fees related to the police services that will be upgraded as well. And then you should look for more fees to be updated at the end of the year when we go through our normal budget process and fee setting timeline.
Very good. Justin, really quick, can I ask you, the function on school property number 10, is that 65 to 75 per hour?
Yes. Is that per hour, Mick?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that might want to be clarified.
Yeah, this is just, this is just a list, our official, this will be given to this listener and then that will be put into our official fee schedule that will have the hours, what unit of measure, in other words.
So Monday, we'll list the three approvals so we can move forward. 19, mid-year budget adjustments. 19, mid-year budget adjustments. This is something you do each year?
Yeah, so I'll let Janice speak to it a little bit. But we basically reached out to all the department heads and asked them to adjust. The adjustments have to stay within the funds, you can't cross fund for the adjustments. One of the things that stood out was the healthcare number was a little bit over than what we anticipated because we had two healthcare plans that are offered per our collective marketing agreements. And most of the employees, more employees than we thought, opted for the buy-up plan, which ended up costing us a little bit more money. We did have some expected and unexpected somewhat maintenance and upgrades at the silver plan. We had a building clean cost contract that rose on us a little bit. And we were able to then go back and lock that rate in that we have now for the next four years. So I don't know if there's anything else you want to add to that.
Pretty much covered it.
Okay. 20 is fly, community day.
So James Rulié, the operator of the airport, was also not able to make it here tonight. So I told him that I'd put in a plug for him. And basically, they'd like to hold their annual community day on September 15th, with the rain date of September 16th, 2008. They plan to have airplane, helicopter, and hot air balloon rides. There'll be airplanes on display. And I know they've also reached out to a lot of the emergency service providers in Pottstown to have displays and information available there as well. So there's also going to be kind of a combination of events. They're also going to have classic cars and drag cars on display at the airport. It's free to the community. The only thing that costs money is if you desire to buy lunch and/or take an airplane ride. So if you can, try to make it out in September.
It is, it's a great event. Okay, 21, Halloween parade.
So this is the annual Halloween parade that is sponsored by the borough. And what we're requesting here is a parade permit and a street closure from 5:30 till 8:30 PM on October 23rd, 2018.
What's that for Monday? 22, manhole frames and lids. We have the list, fabulous.
Yes, so we do have a list. We got three bidders for the manholes, frames, and lids. TLC Trenchless Line Company of Bridgeport is the recommended bidder on that one. Subject to approval of the solicitor.
All right, what's that one? 23, sanitary sewer cleaning and television, telepensing. Any others?
Yeah, so this one is recommended to be awarded to Pipe Services Corporation of Westchester, Pennsylvania.
Okay. And appointments, construction code, order appeals.
So Ray Lopez would like to be reappointed to this position. We had no other applicants.
Okay, what's that? And environmental advisory council.
Katie Scanlon's also seeking reappointment. We had no other applicants for that.
Very good. What's that? 25, Art, we have an administratively approved request for 421 King Street. And I told you upfront, there will be two add-ons. First, I'm seeking a motion to approve the contract between the Borough of Pottstown and Justin Keller as Borough Manager. I'll make that motion.
Second?
Move and second, any discussion by council? And it's this time I can ask for public comment. Since there was no meeting before on this for the public, and it's this time, anyone out here has commented on this, please bring it to us now. Hearing none. All who is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Guys have it, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Second, I am seeking a motion for agreement between the Borough of Pottstown and Nick Markovich as our new police chief.
A motion?
Second.
And second, any discussion here? Again, I'm opening this to the public, if you have any comments. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Guys have it. Congratulations, chief. Okay. Are there any sign-ups for comments? Not too bad, not even nine o'clock yet. Like, it's still limited to three minutes.
All right, Cheryl Miller.
First, I'd like to say I'm on, here on behalf of Art Fusion 19464, our large annual beef and beer fundraiser, Taco Edition, is Saturday, August 18th, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. Tickets are $25 each. It is a wonderful event to support your local community art center. And I have tickets available with me tonight for anybody that would like to purchase and participate. We would greatly appreciate it. Sheila had mentioned about Art Fusion being able to buy into Padita for additional advertising. Art Fusion is a nonprofit, like many others in the community, and a struggling one, like many others in the community. And I'm not sure I don't understand why it isn't Pottstown area industrial development that is promoting, that should be promoting Art Fusion so that, you know, the word gets out there. Because I've been going down to First Fridays for Art Fusion for the last couple months, and a great many people don't even know that they exist. So it's a wonderful organization, and I would like a little more promotion from the borough, from Pate, without having to pay into, for additional advertising. I mean, all of you, tough people, had supported this project when it wanted to go into the East Street Factory. So I'd like to see more of that support. I want to talk about Circle K. It is on the corner of Manatoni and State Street. It is a very visible location, coming in and out of the borough, entry, exit way. It is in deplorable conditions. There is trash in that lot constantly. I've been watching it, and watching it, watching it. Last week, I brought it to the attention of LNI and the Borough Manager. I spoke to the clerk to please go out and clean it up. Went back by, it still wasn't done. The trash cans were empty, but the parking lot was a pigsty. Emailed again, my ward rep, the Borough Manager, LNI Director. They said, okay, well, now that we know it's still out there, we'll address it. I went by again on my way here tonight. The parking lot is in deplorable conditions. If you want to promote a great town, please help start getting it cleaned up. Donald, I find it interesting that you have been responding to calls to John. You're my ward rep, you don't even respond to me. Okay, so your issues with me are personal. We can take them up personally. But before you make any decisions, I want you to make sure that you speak with members of the animal committee so that you understand the many changes that we have made and had to make, had to make for the welfare, safety, and humane conditions for the animals before you make public opinion. Thanks.
I would appreciate it if you would be more respectful to Borough Council, Cheryl, and not release cats that have been trapped in, back into the borough.
Stephanie, the feral cats are protected by Borough ordinance. People are participating in TNR programs and have been for many, many years. We can try to get animals into barn programs, but they're very flooded. There is, there's a line of people waiting to get into them. This is how you control the population in a humane and effective way.
All right, your time's up. Thank you. Next.
Darlene Bebridge, please.
On behalf of the Pottstown Go Fourth Committee, we want to express our gratitude to the borough and community for the tremendous support that we had this year for our festival on the Fourth of July at Memorial Park. This is the second year that we hosted it, and the first year we were able to restore the traditional fireworks. While the day was warm and sunny, clouds later moved in, and the storms forced us to postpone one of our ending events, that being the crowning of our July 4th, 2018 Royal Court. This weekend, the Pottstown Carousel was generous enough to invite us to their building on Sunday, August 12th, at 3:30 for the crowning of the king, queen, and princess of the 2018 Go Fourth Festival. The day will include photo album slideshow of the day's events, Go Fourth merchandise table, where you can get t-shirts, hats, and other memorabilia, as well as a silent auction. And light refreshments will also be served on that day. We'd love to have everybody come out. It will be much cooler inside than it was on the day of the event. And you'll get to mingle with a lot of people who were responsible for putting the event together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do further public comments?
No further. Okay.
Peggy had a little comment, if you allow her to.
Of course.
So I just wanted to make a comment about Valley Forge Tourism from a business perspective. So they have been good partners with Pate, certainly. They do a lot of promotion. Whenever I call in with a new business, they came out, their sales rep came out, and they've been very helpful. They continue to provide data as we look to opportunities to upgrade some hospitality, overnight accommodations in this area, and what appropriate businesses. Really add to economic growth in Pottstown. So I can't say enough about them as an organization. And I know in the past, perhaps it hasn't seemed like they paid attention to the city, the county, but they are responsive to us and have been a great resource to us.
Very good, they got their attention. Next. Okay, councilors.
I agree with Mrs. Miller that we should promote more non-profit organizations, like the CCRU, the only Pottstown-based organization in Pottstown for 25 years. And nobody knows where it is. And we are the only one who serve minority Latinos. Thanks.
Can I ask you one more?
Thank you. I would like to send my condolences to Bill Sharon's family. I was unfortunate to meet him, but I hear so much good things about him. And Joe sent me a text, because he wasn't here today. So he wanted to send his condolences and per his text. He said, Bill Sharon was a great man and a wonderful person. In my first term, he was one of the first staff that I met. He was always friendly, and we became what we consider friends. He always greeted me with a hug, a handshake, wouldn't do. Sorry. He was a big supporter of me, and I appreciate the time we spent working together. He also educated me. I will miss him very, very much. So I wanted to say that. Also, I've been busy. I had a meeting with the superintendent, Rodriguez, because I'm looking into being more active with the school district. And I'll be sending out an email, so it was myself and Justin. We had a meeting, I think it was Monday. And he offered to show us around schools in Pottstown. So I'm looking at trying to schedule some time for that in October. So if you guys was willing to do that, we can take a look at the schools, take pictures with kids. You know, you can post it on Facebook, let them know you and your community. I also went out to the National Night Out. It was my first time, it was very hot, I was sweating. Seen Rita there and Ryan, Ryan's a cute baby. I did go to two ribbon-cutting ceremonies. I went to the ice cream ribbon-cutting ceremonies, but I was late. So, but I was there, and got to meet them. And I also was at the, it was Red?
Red Horse.
Yeah, Red Horse. That was interesting. So if you have an opportunity to go check it out, it's really nice. And I also went to the Farmers Market this last month. So I've been pretty busy, I've been pretty busy.
Counselor left, it's comments? No? Okay. Vice President called?
Before I came to meeting, I stopped in at the Community Garden up at Barth School. They got a new patio installed, and it's very nice. And I saw their garden. Now, it's up and coming, it's getting better every year. I met Daniel Price, who's the Community Garden Manager, and spoke with many of the people that were there. They had a lot of food. And it was the Avenue provided the food, and it looked very good. And there was more people coming as I had to leave. But it looks very, very nice, and the people are quite proud of their garden up there. So I just wanted to mention that to everyone.
Counselor Prosper?
Yeah, I really missed Bill Sharon. I remember I bought my house probably about 11 years ago. I wanted, I got some little guidance of what I was getting into, so I went to one of the Art meetings and showed him some of my designs. And he was really supportive and encouraging. He was very happy that I was here. He was a looking guy.
I wanted to mention too about Bill. He was quite proud of his town, and he wanted the best for every, for the town as much as he could, and like the historic area especially. And Bill will be missed, he was a very good guy.
Mayor?
I just want to congratulate Justin and Chief one more time. Welcome aboard, and thank you to Borough Council for getting these contracts negotiated and pushed through.
I had a much longer history with Bill Sharon than most people. I met him in the early 70s when I started in engineering at Stanley Flag. He was already there as a scheduler in the core shop. So we shared a lot of hours together over the next, those next 20 years. And in between that, he and I served together on different boards, different activities. He helped me start the Pottstown Alliance of Resident Taxpayer, which battled the school board once upon a time. And then when I got onto council, he was quick to come up and say, you know, that he would be part of the team here, and whatever we needed, he would certainly help. He was more than just an employee here in the borough. Even when he left the job here at 4:00, 5:00 o'clock at night. He donated much of his waking hours after that to promoting the town, helping the town. We're going to miss him. So I offer my condolences to his family that he do well in these early meetings, George.